I'd like to call the special meeting of six fifteen, uh, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four to order at six fifteen. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Kinnane.
Present.
Trustee Mills. Oops. Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palafis.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present. Everybody's here? Move on. I'm to recognition of the audience. Does anybody in the audience have anything that they would like to say going once, twice, three times? We'll move on to President's Report. The appointment of Patty Richter as acting village clerk. It says on the agenda effective July first. I'd ask the board to amend that to June, uh, twenty-ninth?
I make a motion to amend the effective date as June twenty-ninth. Second.
We have a motion of a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all.
Solemnly swear.
Do solemn.
Don't hit the board together.
Kid for coming. Holiday card picture.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, the board, no?
You just gotta get one with Art.
Yeah, get one with Art.
You really want one with Art?
You shouldn't smile though, because then we can tell stories about it. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, then, the mayor and the board, I will say.
Okay.
Come on, Art.
I don't know.
Art.
I don't know. I haven't had much.
What next one?
What'd you have?
What? I have a sip of Karen's lemonade.
We shouldn't have business at the conference.
There's some. We get rid of these when we do the big square meetings.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay?
Okay.
Very good.
How about one?
One to me, Beth.
Yeah, that's good. Beth?
In and out?
Yeah.
Like in and out.
Before and after.
Old and new.
Yeah.
Literally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I need to sign something?
Yeah.
That's good.
Okay.
Okay.
Chair will accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second. We have a motion of a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? The ayes have a motion carried. We are adjourned.
Good evening. I would like to call the Public Works and Utility Committee to order on this June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. May I have a roll call, please? Chairman Newell.
Present.
Vice Chairman Mills.
Present.
Trustee Palafis.
Present.
Trustee Stanton. Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Kinnane.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
We have a quorum. Uh, the next item would be the approval of minutes from May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second. Okay, are there any deletions, corrections, additions? Seeing none. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Nonays, motion passed. Oh, and note the one abstention. And public comment, if anyone has anything for this committee? Seeing none, we move on to new business. Item number one, request authorization to award change order number five to the existing twenty eighteen contract with Rousch Construction LLC, which is out of Des Plaines, Illinois, to extend the contract completion timeline and decrease the contract cost for replacement of Gulf Road sanitary sewer lift station.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Uh, the first item this evening is a request to approve a final change order to close out the Gulf sanitary lift station project. Uh, the project had four previous change orders, uh, related to various aspects of the construction work, and this is the final change order, uh, which reduces the overall contract price by nine dollars, um, but, uh, more importantly, extends, uh, the substantial completion date by two hundred and twenty-two days, uh, from the original contract. Uh, many of the delays that we saw on this project were, uh, circumstances that were beyond the control of the contractor or Rousch Infrastructure, um, and staff agrees with the extension. Um, we need to, um, finalize this change order to close the project out in order to close out all the I E P A loan paperwork. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions up here? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Nonays, motion passed. Item number two, request authorization to award contract for vehicle maintenance building tuck pointing to Safeway Tuck Pointing Company, which is out of Des Plaines, Illinois, and a low bid in an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Uh, the second item this evening is a request to award a contract for tuck pointing work, uh, for our Fleet Services Building. Uh, the building was experiencing some leaks, uh, during certain rain events, uh, and two separate roofing companies came out to do inspections. Both indicated, uh, they believed that it was due to, um, some deficiencies in the tuck pointing. Um, uh, some of the mortar joints were deteriorating on the north side of the building, causing water to, uh, to get into the building. Uh, staff did go out for bid, uh, and, uh, for the tuck pointing work, we did receive three submittals. Uh, the low bidder, Safeway Tuck Pointing, has done other work for the village. They've done two other projects for us. Uh, both were completed successfully, and, uh, uh, we're requesting to award them this contract.
Any questions up here? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Nonays, motion passed. The next item would be reports, which are for information only. Department of Public Works' monthly report. Do we have anything additional?
Uh, one thing real quick. Uh, we are starting our Public Works, uh, Citizens Academy, uh, in the middle of July. We do currently have two to three spots open, so it's mostly filled up. Our inaugural class is going to be twelve, so we have, we have a couple spots left open. If anyone else is interested, um, they can email Public Works or call us, and we can get them, get them on the list, and that's it.
That's really exciting. I can't wait. Um, Department of Public Works' monthly report, we will receive and file, uh, receive and file the report. Okay. And then moving on to the Engineering Division Monthly Report, do we have anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay, so we will receive and file that report. The President's Report?
I'll wait for the board meeting. Trustee Newell.
Okay, thank you. Um, under other, I just wanted to mention two things real quick. Um, good job on the repair of the water main this weekend. Kinda unfortunate timing, but hey, it was all taken care of. Good job to all who had to take care of that. And also, we got a really nice letter from a resident on Firestone, um, complimenting one of the workers, which was, uh, his name was Art, and about how friendly, uh, they were very impressed on, um, how, uh, he explained the process to them, and especially because a lot of it was from the, uh, sta- um, the storm damage that happened. So she wanted to call and make sure that, you know, uh, he, he knows that they were really appreciative of what he had done. So that's that. Um, so items in review, uh, we have one, which is a discussion, future community engagement for streetlight project, and can I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Nonays, motion passed, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
I'd like to call to order the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting for June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Would the secretary please call the roll?
Chairman Mills.
Present.
Vice Chairman Palafis.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Kinnane.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Thank you. We're all here. We have a quorum. Um, like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any corrections? Seeing nothing here. All those in favor signify by saying no, uh, saying aye.
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 Ahead of myself. Uh, anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Next, I'll look for a motion for approval of the May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Second.
Uh, any questions on that? I want to thank Trustee Palafis for taking care of that meeting for me. Um, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and put me down for an abstention, please.
Okay.
Okay, we have, uh, any public comments tonight pertaining to this committee? Seeing none, I will move along here. We have no items under new business tonight. Uh, we have reports for information only purposes. First up, the Police Department Monthly Report. Anything you wish to highlight, Chief? Thank you. Uh, that will be marked received and filed. Health and Human Services Department Monthly Report, anything to highlight? Okay, thank you. Oh, and under Police Department, I'd like to, uh, compliment you on Oakley's own report. That was fun to see. Um, next one up is Emergency Management Coordinator's Monthly Report. Nothing to report on that one?
No.
That will be received and filed. And finally, Fire Department Monthly Report. Nothing to mark. Okay, thank you, Chief. We will mark that received and filed. Um, President's Report?
Oh, wait for the board meeting. Trustee Mills.
Thank you. I see nothing other to come before this committee or any items in review. I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
I'd call to order the, uh, Finance Committee. Uh, could I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Palafis.
Present.
Vice Chairman Newell.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Kinnane.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
We have a quorum. Uh, could I have a motion and a second for the approval of minutes from May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four? So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor of their motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Ayes have it. Note the abstention. Uh, public comment. Anybody want to make a public comment for the Finance Committee? If not, we have one item under new business, which is request approval to award a contract to Baxter and Woodman Incorporated to perform a comprehensive water and sewer rate study in an amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand, ten dollars, and a comprehensive stormwater utility fee in the amount not to exceed nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. Can I get a motion and a second? So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Rachel, you want to add anything to?
So, we've been doing these water rate studies, um, for quite some time, since two thousand and four. We do them every five years, and I just think it's, um, really good, um, practice to have this multi-year financial planning to, uh, you know, help mitigate any surprises, make sure our water and sewer fund is, is fiscally, um, healthy, um, and I think it helps improve our citizens' understanding of what makes up our water rates. And so this year is, is new, though. We're adding the stormwater utility fee aspect. I think it, um, we have not really reevaluated that fee since it was created back in twenty thirteen, so it'll be good to take a look at, a deep dive look into that fee and see if there's any options related to that one as well.
Outstanding. If there's other questions or comments, uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Uh, reports, Finance Department. Anything additional?
Nothing.
All righty. Uh, Information Technologies Department.
There are excused absent tonight, and there's nothing to add. Thank you.
All righty. Uh, now, we're reading a monthly report. Uh, any questions, comments? Ben didn't come, but... Okay. All those will be received and filed. President's Report, Mayor? I'll wait for the board meeting. Trustee Palafis? Yes, sir. Uh, nothing another? Uh, no items in review? I will entertain a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. We're adjourned.
It's like somebody in.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the, uh, second village board meeting of the month on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Kinnane.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palafis.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
We have a quorum. The gang's all here. I'll move on to the second item, Pledge of Allegiance. Trustee Kinnane now leads the pledge. Everybody please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trustee Kinnane. With the leave of the board, I'd like to move recognition to the audience till after the additional business, which is the seventh item on the agenda and before the adjournment. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
No. Okay, we'll do that. Chair will accept a motion to approve the methods of the June tenth, twenty twenty-four board meeting. So moved. We have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close?
Abstained.
The ayes have a motion carried. Note the abstention. And we'll move on to consent agenda. Chair will accept a motion.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second on the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda consist of the following: A, approval of the agenda, and B, approval of the schedule of bills for June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of three million, nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. Does anybody want any of these items pulled? From the amped and mised vote? Seeing none? Okay, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Uh, just for one correction, I think, uh, the mayor read nine hundred and twenty-seven mil- thousand, and it's actually three million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-six cents.
Nice catch. Maybe you guys are paying attention. Thanks.
And I will say aye for that.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried.
Move on to six. President's Report. Uh, we have proclamation. Trustee Stanton, do you have that one?
I'm gonna try to get through it. Yes.
Okay.
Office of the mayor proclamation. Whereas Sri Ganapathy Sashi Danada Swamiji, uh, of Mysore, India, is internationally recognized for his spiritual leadership in pioneering work in fostering peace, understanding, and healing through the power of Nada yoga and meditative music. And whereas from July nineteenth to July twenty-first of twenty twenty-four, uh, Sri Swamiji will lead the Gita Utsav at the Now Arena in Hoffman Estates, Illinois, a landmark gathering uniting diverse communities under a shared purpose of promoting world peace, harmony, wisdom, and enlightenment through sacred texts. And whereas during the Gita Utsav, nearly twenty-five hundred participants will unite their voices to chant the Bhagavad Gita, an ancient scripture imparting teachings that inspire and guide humanity toward righteousness, empathy, and universal goodwill. And whereas the timing of this grand celebration aligns with the Holy Festival of Guru Paranima, a day dedicated to honoring spiritual guides who enrich lives through their wisdom and unconditional guidance. And whereas Sri Swamiji dedication to music for meditation and its harmonious blend of spiritual practices have inspired millions around the globe to strive for a peaceful coexistence through inner awakening and universal compassion. And whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates values these principles and the tireless efforts of Sri Swamiji to spread them across continents, fostering a more compassionate and uni- uh, united world, be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of the Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaims Monday, June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, a Sri Ganapathy Sashi Danada Swamiji Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates and urges all Hoffman Estates citizens and business owners to join in extending profound gratitude to Sri Ganapathy Sashi Danada Swamiji for leading the Gita of Ustav and promoting spiritual unity and world peace through this gathering.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We appreciate the great contributions of Sri Swamiji and all the great works he's done. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? The ayes have a motion carried. Kaja, you want to accept this? You and your group? Okay. Coming up, guys. Will I just introduce yourselves for the record? Use the microphone.
We are here to thank you, um, Mayor McLeod and the village trustees for this honor. On behalf of Ganapathy Sashi Danada Swamiji, um, Mysore, India, and Sri Swamiji has been spreading the message of universal peace, um, visiting all, all over the world, and we would like to invite you all to take part in the festivities. It's in Hoffman Estates, Now Arena, um, which is not too far from here. Thank you all again.
Thank you. Coming up, guys. Make the round and shake hands. Yeah. Good to see you again. Yeah, thanks for coming. Good to see y'all. Good to see y'all. You guys have a good group. We going to dinner after?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, long time no see.
Long time no see.
Yeah, I'm good.
Excellent. Okay. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Hold on, hold on.
You, you'd like a video? Okay. All right. Recording. Thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Thank you.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Kaja. Kaja is a longtime resident of Hoffman Estates and also serves as the head of a township assessor. We appreciate everything you do. Okay, we have one board and commission appointment, and that's Patrick Kinnane to the Commission for Senior Citizens for a term ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Uh, Pat, uh, is always volunteering for something, and he's just adding to his list here. Any questions from anybody?
Sure you want to do it?
Yeah, but you were rather reluctant in the second.
Yeah, that's why I wasn't sure you wanted to do it.
You were telling me you, you need to say no to more things.
I never said that.
I don't know how to vote now. He doesn't know how to say no. I know. I'm just kidding. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? The ayes have a motion carried. Thank you, Patrick. We do have a recognition that I'd like to do at this point in time. Resolution recognizing Bev Romanoff for seventeen years of service as village clerk. Whereas Beverly Bev Romanoff was appointed to the position of village clerk of the Village of Hoffman Estates on September first, two thousand and seven. Whereas Bev Romanoff was elected village clerk by the citizens of Hoffman Estates, a total of four times, serving for a total of seventeen years. Whereas during her tenure as village clerk, Bev Romanoff made significant improvements to the organization and efficiency of her office, including spearheading the implementation of an electronic records management, management system. Whereas in her service to the village, Bev Romanoff has demonstrated great knowledge and devotion to the responsibilities of village clerk, finding creative solutions to difficult problems while being polite, courteous, and collegial to her colleagues, members of the public, and the Hoffman Estates business community. Whereas Bev is appreciated by the mayor, village board, and her colleagues for excellent attention to detail, positive approach, and dedication to keeping the best, best interests of the community in mind. Whereas Bev is respected and appreciated by village employees, whom Bev knew by name, enjoyed serving at employee appreciation meals, and advocated for when she felt necessary. Whereas Bev cares deeply about the Hoffman Estates community, her friends, family, and neighbors. Whereas village clerk Romanoff will retire on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, from the Village of Hoffman Estates and the mayor and the board of trustees of the village, hereby recognize her contributions and dedication to the betterment of Hoffman Estates. Now therefore be resolved as by the president and board of trustees of the Village of Hoffman Estates, Co-County, Illinois, as follows. In section one, incorporation of recitals, the foregoing recitals are hereby made a part of this recognition. Section, section two, recognition of service. On behalf of the village, its residents, business community, and those who visit and enjoy Hoffman Estates, the village board hereby recognizes a long-term service and devotion. The Bev Romanoff has conferred upon the village and its residents, and does honor and thank her for her dedication to the office of village clerk. Section three, that this resolution will be in full force and effect immediately from and after its passage and approval. Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, we have a second?
I'd already.
We do have a second. Okay. Yeah, Bev came into a chaotic office. I was putting it kindly, and straightened it out really quickly, and she's been an outstanding village clerk, and we're lucky to have her for seventeen years. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? The ayes have a motion carried. Bev? You're not gonna shake hands?
No. You don't want to picture with your flag?
Come on.
No.
Group hug? No? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to compliment, uh, Public Works on the nice job they did on the Highland Wood Water Main Crossing. It's never good when something goes out, uh, on a weekend, particularly on a hot weekend, and they did get, uh, everything put back together, and we appreciate that. We'll move on to B, Trustee Kama, starting with Trustee Kinnane.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, on June twelfth, I attended the seniors', uh, seniors' commission luncheon. On June twelfth, I attended a meeting with the mayor and village staff to review the annual ComEd report with ComEd representatives. On June thirteenth, I attended the Compass Data kickoff at the future site of their data center. I had chance talk to CEO Chris Crosby, who told me that the buildings will be so big when they are completed that you will not be see, not be able to stand at one end of the building and see the other end of the building. He also said that once the five buildings are completed, that they will be able to see them from space. Uh, June thirteenth, I attended a foundation golf outing meeting. June thirteenth, I attended a Knights of Columbus third-degree exemplification ceremony at St. Hubert's. June thirteenth, I attended a Knights of Columbus business meeting in which I was unanimously voted, eh, to be the, uh, next recorder of the Knights, attended a special board meeting for the swearing-in of Patty Richter as acting village clerk, and congratulations, Patty. Welcome aboard. Uh, I think you'll really enjoy it. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Arnett.
Thank you. Um, on this past Saturday, uh, the six fifteenth, uh, Trustee Newell and I attended the CAC run. Um, I think, I think this is probably one of the ones, the biggest ones they've had. They had over two hundred participants.
That's great.
Compliments to them. Uh, even though it was pretty warm out, they had a great turnout. Um, we were able to attend the fishing derby. Compliments to Trish and the, um, Chamber for putting on a great event as well, uh, they do every year. And also, congratulations and welcome aboard, Patty. We hope you enjoy it, and welcome to the team. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Stanton.
Thank you. Uh, the eleventh of June, I was able to attend the Economic Development Commission meeting. On the twelfth of June, I attended the senior lunch sponsored by our senior citizens commissioning and helped serve the food to our seniors. On the thirteenth, I attended the Compass Data Centers Project kickoff at the former Sears headquarters. On the fourteenth, I attended a meeting with, uh, manager, uh, Palm and Trustee Palafis and two of our concerned citizens. And then on the fifteenth of June, I attended the Hoffman Estates Chamber of Commerce Fishing Derby. Want to congratulate, uh, Bev Romanoff for upcoming retirement, and- Want to congratulate Bev Romanoff for upcoming retirement, and I want to congratulate Patty Richter for her appointment as the next village clerk. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Mills.
Well, I've been out of town last couple of weeks, so I've missed a couple of meetings. I'm glad to be back with everyone tonight. Really haven't been involved with anything village-wide, but I am sad to see Bev retiring. You've done a great job. I got to compliment you and wish you all the best as you go into your retirement. And congratulations to Patty Richter on taking over her position. I'm sure you'll do great. That's it. Thank you.
Trustee Noel.
Okay. June 12th, I attended the senior luncheon, helped serve the lunch. On the 13th, the Village Green concert. Had a nice crowd out there. And once again, this Thursday, we'll have another one, and hopefully the weather will cooperate. We'll see. On the 15th, as trustee Arnett had mentioned, we were at the CAC run. Huge, huge crowd, and it's so amazing to see all these people there and for a good, good cause. Also, the Chamber Fishing Derby. We were there and some people caught some big fish, and it was kind of cool. And congrats to Patty Richter. Okay? Welcome aboard and best wishes to our retiring clerk, Ms. Bev. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Palafas.
Yes, sir. Summer concerts, like Anna said, was awesome, although I didn't see you there. I missed you. I don't know where I was. I was probably driving a cart. And the band was amazing. It was warm, which was good. Everybody the week before complained it was too cold. So the Compass Data Center, like trustee Kanane and others have said, was awesome. Again, another hot day. It's good that we have the tent out there. Attended a meeting with the mayor over some parking discussions with Harvest Church. Attended a meeting with Miriam and Benish and Eric Palm on Friday. Thanks for coming in, ladies. Congratulations to Patty for being sworn in this evening as the next village clerk. I also stopped by the Chamber Fishing Derby, however, at a different time than most of you were there. And then Bev, one chapter ends and another begins for you. I'm excited for you, but I'm going to miss you like crazy.
You know where I live.
I do know where you live. You're my Starbucks route, so you'll hear me beeping a lot. Don't answer. Okay. Anyway, good luck with everything, and I know you're moving on to next generation types of activities. Look forward for that for you. And that's all for me, mayor.
Okay. Yeah, I'll go through my calendar for the last week, too. June 11th, I attended the Economic Development Commission meeting. And Wednesday, the 12th, I did serve the senior luncheon. Bev always honcho the volunteers serving, so we're going to have to step up our game, people. And Wednesday evening, I attended the Northwest Municipal Conference Board of Directors meeting. June 13th was a great day, the Compass Data Centers kickoff. Very excited about this. This is a tremendous addition to our community, and we've been successful so far, the village board and the village staff and myself in converting the old Ameritech Building and the Sears Holdings Buildings into something that's turned out to be very good. It was challenging, but I applaud all of your efforts, and it was going to pay off. Then afternoon, I attended the Fourth of July Commission meeting. Yes, that's coming up quickly. On the 15th, as was mentioned, there was a CAC run, and my wife Joanie and I attended the Gigi's Run, which is out at the Village Green, and then the Fishing Derby. This morning, we had the, I served on the Pace Suburban Bus Board, and we had a meeting with the local mayors and stakeholders on the future of Pace and what they were looking for and what improvements they'd like to be made and whatever suggestions they have. Going to miss you horribly, Bev. Not going to be the same without you. Good luck in your retirement. I know you'll be very busy in your retirement, so I'm not quite sure you retired. And congratulations to Patty Richter on assuming the position of acting village clerk effective June 29th, 2024. Okay, we'll move on to village manager. Yes?
Before you move on really quick, I just have one more thing to add for the CAC.
Yeah.
I have to say that this was probably one of the most well-run events. Compliments to Chief Colley, who was there to help organize it from the get-to that morning. But also that Oakley and Hope from Streamwood were the main attraction for the whole entire event.
I'm sure they were.
They were so cute.
How can you compete with dogs? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to village managers' report. Manager Pape?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Hey, village clerks' report.
Nothing to report.
Hey, treasurers' report. Anybody have any questions on the treasurer's report? If not, it will be received and filed. And we'll move on to committee reports, transportation and road improvement. Trustee Arnett, transportation and road improvement.
Okay. July 1st, we will call to order a Transportation and Road Improvement Committee at 7:00 a.m. here at the village hall. We'll begin with a roll call followed by the approval of minutes for June 10th, 2024. If anyone has a public comment, we'll go ahead and address that at that time. We have one new business request approval to change order number one to the contract with H. and Hay and Associates Incorporated out of Chicago, Illinois for design engineering services for the village hall parking lot project in the amount of $127,100 for a total not to exceed cost of $167,100. Move on to reports for information only, transportation division monthly report. Move on to president's report if there's anything in other or items in review, and we'll call for an adjournment. If you're meeting that early in the morning, you might be by yourself. It's at 7:00 a.m. instead of 7:00. Oh, 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, trustee Arnett. Move on to planning, building, zoning. Trustee Stanton.
Following transportation, we'll call to order the Planning, Building, and Zoning Committee on July 1st, 2024. We'll look for a roll call to establish quorum, then approval of the minutes for June 10th, 2024. After that, we'll ask for a public comment, and then we'll proceed to old business, which is number one, is a request by 5A C LLC to extend the deadline for existing uses to remain on the Plum Farms 16 acre property at the northwest corner of Higgins Road and Old Sutton Road, which was continued from June 10th, 2024. New business, that's to be determined, and then we'll have three reports for information only. First at the planning division, then code enforcement, and then economic development and tourism, all monthly reports. We'll proceed to a president's report if there's anything to be added, and we have nothing in other at this time or items in review, then we'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, trustee Stan. We'll move on to general administration personnel. Trustee Kanane.
Thank you, mayor. Immediately following the planning, building, and zoning committee meeting on July 1st, 2024, we'll have the general administration and personnel committee meeting. Item one, we'll have a roll call to determine if there's a quorum. Item two, we'll have the approval of the minutes from June 10th, 2024. Item three will be public comment. Right now, there's nothing listed under new business under reports. Number one, we'll have the cable TV monthly report to receive and file. Number two, human resources management monthly report to also receive and file. And item three, legislative operations and outreach monthly report to receive and file. We'll also, item four, the president's report. Item five, no items listed under other or six items in review. And item seven, we will ask for an adjournment. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kanane. Move on to seven additional business. Seven A request board approval to award a contract to Baxter and Woodman, Inc. to perform a comprehensive waters and sewer rate study in an amount not to exceed $47,010 and a comprehensive storm rowdy utility fee study in an amount not to exceed $9,700. This was reviewed earlier in committee. Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any questions on this? Seeing no questions, can you call the roll? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Kanane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Noel.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to seven B, request board authorization to award change order number five to the existing 2018 contract with Rousch Construction LLC, Displanes, Illinois, to extend the contract completion timeline and decrease the contract cost for replacement of the Gulf Road sanitary lift station, sanitary sewer lift station. Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions on this item? Again, this was reviewed in committee. Seeing none, can you call the roll? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Kanane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Noel.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Yeah. Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Getting rough to do it, huh?
Just getting choked up.
Yeah.
Move on to seven C. Request board authorization to award contract for vehicle maintenance building, tuck pointing to Safeway Tuck Pointing Company, Displanes, Illinois, low bid and an amount not to exceed $80,000. Chair will accept a motion. So moved. Second. We have a motion. We have a second. When was that building built, Mr. Neville? Yeah, around the same time as the Public Works garage. Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions on this? Seeing none, can you call the roll? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Kanane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Noel.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Harnett.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, before we move on to recognition of the audience, does anybody need a break up here? Okay, we'll take a short break, make it short, so we can get back to our business.
I want a motion to that.
Yeah, take a motion.
I'll make a motion for a short adjournment.
Oh, second.
Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll be back shortly. We adjourned briefly. What was this? Hey, we are back. You want to call the roll and we establish a quorum? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Kanane.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Noel.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett. Mayor McLeod.
Present. Okay, we have a quorum. We got a sign-in sheet? Manager Pape?
I do.
Again, the rules are three minutes, not more. And we'll start with the sign-in sheet. You got the names?
Miriam Hoffman.
Assalamu alaikum. That is a greeting that Muslims around the world greet each other with when they see each other. It means peace be upon you. I'm sure you're all aware that over 2 billion Muslims around the world are celebrating Eid Al Adha, which literally means in Arabic, holy day of sacrifice. And Muslims greet each other on that holy day with Eid Mubarak, which means blessed holy day. Maybe the board would like to greet my brothers and sisters in the audience with such a saying, Eid Mubarak, if you want to repeat after me. Okay. Eid Al Adha is a holy day that occurs at the end of Muslims pilgrimage in Mecca every year. It commemorates Abraham's sacrifice, and as I said, it is called Holy Day of Sacrifice. Usually, families greet each other and celebrate with sweets and food and visit each other's, wishing each other holidays and festivities. However, this year, we are here instead of celebrating our festivities. We are here because our brothers and sisters in Gaza are not celebrating. Usually, people around the world, Muslims around the world, gather to share meals and sweets. We know Gaza is starving, literally. On this hot day outside, I could not but help remember our brothers and sisters and the little kids who are in plastic tents in almost 100-degree heat in Gaza, exposed 24 hours to the elements. And it broke my heart to even think that children have to deal with that. Not only are they starving to death, dying of dehydration, but to be exposed to the elements. I mean, me being outside for half an hour was more than I could handle. So my heart and thoughts are definitely with them.
15 seconds.
We're here to ask you once again to pass a ceasefire resolution and to stand with humanity. Let our community know that you feel with us, that you represent us, that you empathize with us.
Thank you for your comments.
Benish Tanvir.
Assalamu alaikum. Eid Mubarak to my Muslim family and friends. We find ourselves here once again, as we have every two weeks for the past few months, pleading with you to pass a ceasefire resolution. We have recounted the horrors we've witnessed over the last eight months, the relentless atrocities committed by Israel funded and now directly supported by our own military and government in the assault on Rafah. As fellow human beings, do you not feel anything? It deeply disturbs me that some of you have not uttered a single word of sympathy. Last week, we finally had the opportunity to meet with trustee Palafas, trustee Stanton, and Eric Palm. Thank you for that, to discuss the ceasefire resolution. It gave me a glimmer of hope to hear some sympathy, some empathy from you. But let me be clear, empathy without action means nothing. We need more than words. We need courage. We need you to take a stand. Today is Eid Al Adha, a sacred day meant for celebration with family and loved ones. Yet here we are once again, because there can be no celebration while we witness the targeting of children in Palestine. Yesterday, on Father's Day and Eid Al Adha, in Palestine, more massacres occurred and more restrictions were imposed by Israel. People not only in Gaza, but also in the West Bank faced violent attacks and were prevented from attending Eid prayers. Starvation as collective punishment continues to be employed by Israel. The world is crying, screaming out for justice for Palestine, yet our government has shamelessly revealed its true colors. Imagine just for a moment if it were your children, your families, living in constant fear and under siege. How long could you endure watching them suffer? How long before you demanded action, demanded justice? The children of Palestine do not have that luxury of imagining. They live in the nightmare every day. Their fathers, on what should have been a day of joy, face unspeakable horrors instead. We saw fathers holding the lifeless bodies of their children in their arms. How can we celebrate anything? Will you be different from our government? Will you finally tune in to your humanity? Will you do the bare minimum and at least pass the ceasefire resolution and stand with humanity? We implore you to act, to recognize the pain and suffering of innocent lives, and to make a stand for peace and justice. The children of Palestine deserve to live without fear. And the world deserves leaders who value human rights over political agendas.
Thank you for your comments.
Let us not return here in two weeks with the same plea. Let today be the day you choose to stand on the side of humanity.
Thank you for your comments.
Can be powerful, that it can lead to meaningful change. Thank you.
Tej Bramba.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Mayor McLeod. I'm Tej, and tonight I'd like to ask all of you about expectations. Most of you on this board have been trustees for many years. So may I ask, how many of you expected the global pandemic that happened in 2020 that had an impact on the village of Hoffman Estates? It's all right if you didn't, because I don't think most people did. I have no doubt that the first case in Illinois being treated in Hoffman Estates perturbed all of you. As Oscar Wilde once said, "To expect the unexpected shows a thoroughly modern intellectual." I'm sure all of you, from trustee Palafas, who is chair of the finance committee, to trustee Stanton, who is chair of the planning, building, and zoning committee, had to make decisions about projects and regular village operations that you did not expect to make. The grant of $12,000 that residents behind on rent were given was probably un-
The grant of $12,000 that residents behind on rent were given was probably unexpected. But that is why you are in your positions as trustees. You're able to confront such circumstances. I can tell you that I did not expect to be advocating for ceasefire in Gaza a few months ago. But when faced with such circumstances, I'm doing what I can, even when it is unprecedented for me. But there is some part of this that is not unprecedented for all of you. When you have shown sympathy for Ukraine, why not show sympathy for Palestinians? I come from a Hindu family, and I appreciate the recognition of people like my family with Sri Ganpati Swamiji Day. But Ganpati Ji also emphasizes wisdom and empathy. And as Nelson Mandela once said, "For anybody who changes his principles depending on whom he is dealing, that is not a man who can lead." You have the gift of a few blueprints on how to deal with this issue. You can look to towns like Batavia, Villa Park, and Burr Ridge for some different ideas about ceasefire resolutions. I'm sure during the pandemic, you all made some calls you didn't expect to make. I know Mayor McLeod and a few trustees have some communication with Raja Krishnamurti before. Why not call him and ask him to meet with his constituents, also your constituents, about an issue affecting them? I have called him many times, and he will not answer me. In the face of dire and unexpected circumstances, we can do many things, but doing nothing is the most pitiful of all. You're insulting your constituents by not making any path available for democratically addressing their issues. But perhaps more disturbingly, you are insulting yourselves because you have already done better before. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Henley Adurmar.
Hello. I have only attended the past three meetings of this, of this Village Hall meeting, and I've listened to my community members speak eloquently and determined to make you all hear the tame plea that is to urge you to pass a ceasefire motion, a ceasefire that is 254 days too late. 254 days, well near an entire year and an estimated 200,000 martyrs of this genocide. Unfortunately, I feel those words such as genocide have lost meaning to people of your experience who will never even think to put yourself in the position of those that have been under violent occupation for the past eight decades. But you could not if you tried. That would require you to live outside of your American privilege as a white person on the stolen land of Turtle Island, which we are on. Last meeting, my community member, Tej, asked if any of the members on this board had seen the horrific images and videos of the Nusserat massacre, which had claimed the lives of at least 276 Palestinians and likely more casualties that will never be known, to retrieve four Israeli hostages. I believe it was Mr. Trustee Stanton that had said you did witness these videos, and you were asked if it had affected you. You responded, "Of course, of course," as if we are supposed to know, based on your inactions, that undoubtedly it had caused you to have a reaction. For me, as a person who gets affected by the brutalities of this world, it makes me want to do anything and everything I can to stop it, even though I am not in a position of power such as you all. So why? Why, why do you do nothing and continue to do nothing? My Muslim brothers and sisters are missing their holy day Eid al Adha to come to be misrepresented and ignored. You could not even say Eid Mubarak. As a Jewish person, I stand for them who cannot be here, and I stand to plead with you that this is not protecting Jewish people in this community. It is only further dividing us. During these holy days of Eid, in occupied Jerusalem, Al-Quds, Palestinian Muslims were denied entry into Al-Aqsa, the most holy site for Muslims. And as I have said before to you all, you are enacting the same violence with your silence and your inaction as the Israeli government does to Palestinians in their own home. If that does not affect you at all, then don't pretend that it does.
15 seconds.
Call for a ceasefire now. You are obligated, if you are truly affected. And to those who have looked away for 254 days, soon enough you will no longer be able to be blind. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Fajez Kozendar. Fajez Kozendar. Fatma.
Hi, thank you for your time today. Just wanted to start off by saying that if you knew me well, you would know that I'm not the kind of person that would get up in a tense meeting like this, let alone speak at them. Although my 9:00 to 5:00 is more corporate, I spend most of my life in service of others, whether that's charity fundraising, volunteering, or specifically at our local hospice. We all know the situation in Gaza, so I won't go into how they have no food, no water, no aid that has remained blocked off. And whilst we can ignore, deny, shut down the uncomfortable and continuous exposes from human rights organizations and news outlets, the foundation and bottom line of every single report is that there is undeniably and unarguably the grossest level of human suffering occurring. It's almost medieval. In fact, I would say it is medieval. Considering children with their legs and arms blown off are given basic painkillers that are designed for tummy aches to somehow relieve them. Whilst our community hurts, we have not a single outlet for this grief. On the 24th of February 2022, Russia invaded Ukraine, and the humanitarian response, both locally and nationally, was immediate. In fact, on March 8th, not even two weeks later, 12 days to be precise, the Hoffman Estates Village set up a dedicated resource page for donations, which is still set up to this day. Hoffman Estates offered three drop-off locations in our area. But when it comes to Gaza, you say it's not a local issue. Gaza is not even a searchable item on our page with a "no results found" message, a message that says it all without actually saying it all, quite literally bringing to light the daily disregard for our hurt, which we in numbers cry out to every meeting, eight months in. I also know Hoffman Estates is home to refugees from European regions following a housing program offered by the Biden administration of up to 1,000 people across America. My neighbor, in fact, who I've long supported, offering legal aid, translated documents for, and even driven to school because of the trauma they have endured, that the separation between mother and son was too much for the journey to school. And whilst I will always continue to support and help thy neighbor, it's all very painful, while struggling to digest the division in our time of need, to understand the we versus you, when we are saying but we are a part of you. There may be an injustice happening in Gaza, but there's also a huge one that is occurring right here, that you're enabling by continuously ignoring our pleas for support, supporting getting a ceasefire resolution on the agenda, to vote and pass it, or at the very least, meet with us outside of these board meetings. All that being said, I get it. I know our political climate doesn't make it easy. I know there must be a fear or anxiety around this. But as board members, you are not in the business of, but as board members, you are not in the business of condemning civilians, but you are in the business of protecting them. Show us something, some act of good faith, please. I will end, end by this. Ask yourself, where is your red line? Because we are eight months into this. Forty-eight cities have passed resolutions and proclamations calling for a ceasefire, mostly in the Midwest, Chicago being a major one.
15 seconds.
We are asking you to say our community doesn't accept this, or at the very least, meet with us. Because I worry that if this isn't going to change us as a community, nothing will.
Thank you for your comments.
Angel Tovars. I'm sorry, Angel Tovar.
For 254 days, the genocide in Palestine has continued unabated. People are dying and lives are being profoundly affected, even here in our own community. We're witnessing a disturbing rise in Islamophobia, antisemitism, and hate crimes. But despite the rhetoric telling us that this isn't a local issue, we have proven time and again that it deeply impacts us all. It's interesting to me how you all can show sympathy to someone who is simply leaving a job, stopping an entire meeting for a couple of minutes over some tears, but not the thousands of children who are dying in Gaza. We have been silenced, disrespected, and even gaslit. The hesitancy in passing a ceasefire is baffling. What harm could there possibly be in taking this step? Supporting a ceasefire is a critical move towards humanity and peace. There is literally no risk in signing it. So what are you afraid of? I'm deeply disappointed in this council. And it's disheartening to see those with the power to do the right thing choose not to. And it's frightening to know that justice and humanity can be so easily ignored. I hope you all have a change of heart and do what's right. And look at the towns around you who have set the tone, Burr Ridge, Batavia, and so many others. They're still up and running, living life as usual despite passing the resolution. So please just pass the resolution and do the right thing. But as I look around and see many of you all's inattentiveness, I'm not optimistic. So please do better.
Thank you for your comments.
Keith Larson. Keith Larson, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Keith Larson, and I'm here again tonight to ask you to support the resolution calling for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. I've heard some reasons why you'll not pass such a resolution, but those are just excuses to avoid something that you think is controversial. But I ask, how is it not already controversial to continuously ignore your own constituents and walk out of the room while a constituent is speaking? We have been coming here, meeting after meeting, asking you to pass a resolution that costs Hoffman Estates nothing. Similar resolutions that passed in nearby municipalities denounce both the October 7th attacks and the ongoing genocide. Failing to pass a resolution that simply denounces violence and crimes against humanity that our government is complicit in, despite pleading from your own constituents who are directly affected by it, is costly beyond measure. From what I have seen, it does not seem like this board cares about Palestinian, Arab, or Muslim residents. I hope you prove me wrong. Yet last month, a proclamation for Jewish-American Heritage Month was passed unprompted. As a Jewish-American myself, I appreciate the gesture, but this eagerness to acknowledge American Jews while ignoring others sends a clear message. Additionally, this proclamation was not just about Jews. It directly mentioned Zionism in Israel. This is yet another example of the new form of antisemitism crafted by Zionists to conflate the entirety of the Jewish people with a fascist state known as Israel. Israel intentionally uses symbols of Judaism to use as a shield from criticism of their incredibly racist and genocidal behavior that Israel has committed since its creation amid the ethnic cleansing of 750,000 Palestinians known as the Nakba. This does not help Jews in any way. On the contrary, it is dangerous for Jews to conflate us with an ideology many of us reject, and a state that many of us do not live in, just as it is dangerous to conflate Jews with money and power, as antisemites have done for centuries. Because of the Holocaust, people are understandably afraid of being called antisemitic for questioning Israel's actions, and this makes this propaganda so insidious and effective. That being said, I don't think the primary purpose of this propaganda is to endanger Jews. The primary purpose is to justify the genocide of the Palestinian people. I went to the Holocaust Museum in Skokie when I was young, and it made a lasting impression on me. All my life, I was left confused. How could the world let this happen? What could I do to stop it from happening again? Well, now I understand that it was inaction and apathy from people in positions of power that allowed the Holocaust to happen. I see it happening again, and I have chosen my side. It is not too late for you to choose the right side, too, and use your power as too many failed to do in the past. Please be on the right side of history and support this resolution.
15 seconds.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Zoima.
Hi, my name is Zoima. I'm the Chair of Cook County Green Party. Our candidate, Joe Stein, is sending a pledge across the state, pledge to stop genocide in Gaza. Israel, enabled by the United US, is committing genocide against Palestinians in Gaza. Tens of thousands have already been killed, many of them children. The entire population of over 2 million is facing brutal violence, ethnic cleansing, starvation, thirst, homelessness, and the disease due to Israel's all-out assault, blockade, and destruction of civil, civilian infrastructure. A landslide majority of US voters support a ceasefire, an end to the genocidal war on Gaza. But the politicians aren't listening. Instead, politicians are taking marching orders from APEC and the war profiteers who supply bombs, bullets, and diplomatic cover to the Israel government to carry out its agenda of genocide and ethnic cleansing. But our voter has the power and the duty to stop this. We are united to defend human rights and to stop Islamophobia, antisemitism, censorship, and hate. Today, we are here to request you pass a resolution that ends the genocide in Gaza, call for ceasefire, but only today. We have the power to stop this. We will, we use our power at the election, the ballot box. We Green Party represent the marginalized communities. Those are our voters, and we will remember today at the election day. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Shaki Mustafa.
Good evening. My name is Shaki Mustafa. I really got nothing to say when I saw you guys disrespect our community. You don't even bother to say hello to us. The lady here told you just to repeat after me, and you don't want to do that because you guys just numb. You don't want to listen to nobody. You see, this guy is watching the clock. In the last meeting, I watched it. Two of your trustee was texting each other, so you're not listening to us. All I could say, I hope you pass it, but I don't know if you're listening to us. I have a doubt in that. And if you don't, shame on all of you.
Thank you for your comments.
Belinda Mustafa.
Hello, Mayor and trustees. My name is Belinda Mustafa. And I just want you guys to know, I am a Christian, not Muslim. But my Bible does tell me that we should love our neighbors and our brothers as we love ourselves. I love our Muslim community, and it breaks my heart to see what's going on in Gaza. And then, you know what? It wasn't even just a few minutes ago, I just seen each one of you pledge their allegiance to the flag. And in the pledge, you all said, "Justice for all." What are you doing to have justice for the Palestinian people? You're supposed to be fighting. That's what you pledged, justice for all. And so I'm not seeing any justice for the Palestinian people. I need you guys to step up your game. This has been going on, not since October 7th. This has been going on since 1948. It's just recently reported, over 500 children are just in prison, just throwing a stone. Their sentence is up to 30 years. Could you imagine when your kid just pick up a rock and throw in it? And then what happens? You get picked up and they're hauled off to jail. And you know what? You never get to see your kid again for over 30 years. You'll probably be dead before you even get to see your kid. This is just the beginning of what's, things that are going on in Palestine. And I watch TikTok, I watch a lot of different videos, actually seen like a woman, a pregnant woman getting with a tank hit, run over, back and forth, back and forth, until actually the baby had came out before they took it off. Are they really protecting themselves by doing things like that? Are they protecting themselves when they put guns in the hospital, the baby's head's in shooting them? I cry, I cry so bad. And I pray to God, thank God. This isn't my children. Thank God I'm not there. Sorry, just hard just to watch these videos. But I can't because I need to know what's going on with my brothers and sisters here. I'm just asking you all, please. You did pledge your allegiance for justice for all, and I'm asking you, please. I need you guys to stand up and pass the ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Solik Khalid.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Today, the world's nearly 2 billion Muslims are celebrating Eid al Adha. In addition to marking the end of the annual Hajj pilgrimage, this holiday honors the prophet Abraham and his obedience to the will of God. The holiday honors the same Abraham, who is the spiritual ancestor of both the Jewish and Muslim peoples, who despite the current polarized climate, have more in common than you would think. In the spirit of interfaith solidarity, I would like to read to you excerpts of an op-ed written by Sacramento, California's Jewish mayor, who championed his city's successful ceasefire resolution, as have dozens of other Jewish elected officials across the country. Those who point out that the Sacramento City Council has no purview of over a war thousands of miles away are correct. We don't, but this resolution is about Sacramento. The events in the Middle East have deeply divided our community and fractured our proud history. and fractured our proud history of interfaith solidarity. Many Sacramentoans are also deeply affected by the conflict because they have family members and friends in Israel and Gaza. Some people have told me that introducing a ceasefire resolution won't help tamp down the anger and will instead inflame it. But we are experiencing the consequence of doing and saying nothing. Every week in our chambers, dozens, and sometimes even hundreds of people come to express their pain, some constructively and some not. Considering in passing a fair resolution, acknowledging pain and anguish on all sides would at the very least demonstrate that everyone has been heard by their elected representatives. I know there are no guarantees, but I believe a balanced resolution like this one offers the best hope of improving an untenable situation. I have many responsibilities as a mayor, one of which is to represent the entire community. It is also my responsibility to do all I can to lower the emotional temperature in our city, to help heal and to seek peace between longtime friends and allies who are currently bitterly divided. For many weeks, I have talked to members of the Muslim, Palestinian, and Jewish communities to try to help find common ground. The resulting resolution reflects deeply held principles in these communities, even if some do not want it heard at all. There's nothing lost and much to gain by our communities coming together. The anger, trauma, and fear that the Jewish, Palestinian, and Muslim-Americans feel is real. But we are not at war with our Sacramento brothers and sisters. We are fellow members of a community that has always stood with and for one another. Amid great mourning and anger, I'm calling on our city to once again choose hope over continued division. There is enough in the document for everyone, for every side to like, and enough for every side to feel some discomfort and even disagreement, such as the nature of principled compromise. Let's show up in the spirit of friendship. We might not be able to create peace in the Middle East, but we can model the peace that we want to see throughout the world here in Sacramento. Mayor, Trustees, I urge you for the sake of interfaith harmony here in Hoffman Estates, please add a ceasefire resolution to your agenda and seriously consider passing it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Henley Swalsley. Henley Swalsley. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? If not, Chair, accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Your motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. The ayes have it, we are adjourned.